I call to order the Town of Old Tiberic zoning commission regular and hybrid meeting of Monday, April twenty twenty twenty-three at seven two o'clock at seven P. M. in Town Hall, Earth floor conference room, three oh two Main Street, Old Tiberic. Steven Tanet, or me, Bob Freeman, Chair, Mark Calderella, Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, regular commission members, Mark Delmonico and Anne Marie Thorson. Also present this evening are alternates for the commission, John Henry and Justin Terribilli. Sandy DeSenzo is not present this evening. Here at the table, we also have our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa, and there are clerk Joanne Galley, three people in the room and two online. Next on our agenda under regular business is minutes, approval of the minutes of our meeting on Monday, March twentieth. Are there any additions or corrections?
I don't see any.
None appearing? They have a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, March twentieth as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Mark Delmonico seconds Jerry Lewis's motion to approve the minutes of March twentieth as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Motion carries five zero zero, no abstentions, none opposed. Minutes of our special meeting are forthcoming in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we just were discussing.
Next on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence other than that which is related to other agenda items?
No.
None. First up on the agenda would be continued public hearings for A, SPR Oasis LLC application for structural exception use for fifty-two Spencer Plain Road. The application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Next on the agenda is for B, Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated, petition to amend the Old Tiberic zoning regulations to amend section fifty-three point one, standards for motor vehicle uses to eliminate separation distance requirements for fuel pumps and add a requirement for vehicle battery charging stations. Now, according to the submission by the applicant on March sixth, they have modified their application so that fifty-three point one standards, part B, would say no pump or other fuel filling devices for the retail sale of gasoline or when the motor vehicle fuel on any lot will be located within less than twenty-five feet of any street line or property line, no motor vehicle fueling station will be located or within a distance of five hundred feet, which is very long. Is this? I have, no, that's the second. My fault, that's the second.
Okay.
They modified one of them and they are not distinguished by agenda items or otherwise, so I misread that.
Okay.
So the, okay, the application for the first public hearing is to modify section fifty-three point one, part B, no pump or other fuel filling devices for the retail sale of gasoline or other motor vehicle fuel on any lot will be located within less than twenty-five feet of any street line or property line. And then new language, on any lot with gasoline pumps, there shall be vehicle battery charging stations of not less than fifty percent of the number of gasoline pumps. With regard to materials submitted at the March sixth meeting, are there any new materials to come to the commission this evening? Mr. Royce?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Just a moment.
You have to.
I have a question to ask for the commissioners who were not present at the March sixth meeting as to whether or not they can state that they have listened to the recording and feel fully qualified to participate and deliberate on this public hearing.
I do.
You did?
Yes, I listened and I do feel like I could participate and.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mark Calderella?
I have, then I do.
Mark Calderella says that he has listened to the recordings and feels qualified to participate in the public hearing at his point and in deliberations on this matter. Now, sorry, Mr. Royce?
Chairman, I just want to confirm on the record that there was materials that were presented for the record, posted on the website, and I believe you have seen copies of that. One of the first items was two maps which were referenced in a memorandum of law which was submitted and posted on the website. So I believe you have received a copy of the memorandum of law that was posted. I believe you received copies of the two maps that were submitted with it. So as lawyer here, part of the record, I don't need to give you another. And the memorandum of laws I indicated to the commission, I wanted to submit in time for it to be transmitted to Matt Willis for him to be able to comment on it. And there has been posted on the website and I have retained a copy of his letter of April third.
Can I just interrupt for one second, just a housekeeping issue? So this application, I know you mentioned the amendment for the five hundred feet. The first agenda item is not the one with the five hundred feet. It's a little confusing because there's two for the same. So the first one is to eliminate completely. So I just want to be clear.
That's right. As I read, I did not read the words that were to be eliminated, which included the prior separation requirement.
Right, I just want to be clear for all of us to see.
Existing and proposed.
Thank you. And that is consistent with my understanding where we are.
Okay.
And the memorandum of law which was submitted was in relationship to the, to the first petition, which is the subject of this public hearing. That is, the elimination of separation distance in its entirety. And as I indicated, that we did want to give Matt Willis sufficient time to review and comment. And he has sent in a letter to the commission and that was dated today, so I'm uncertain as to whether the commission has received it.
No.
Okay. It's all pretty short, so I will just make a few comments regarding that. The final item was a letter from Chief Spira, addressed to the commission and chairman, dated April third. And I just want to make sure that the commission has received that letter also.
April second.
April second, sorry.
Yes, we did get that.
Okay, so that also, that is part of the, part of the record. For the benefit of you kind of basketball family, for myself, it will be brief.
Thank you. Nine twenty, nine twenty would be okay.
I'd view it as a tip on. Okay. As, as the first petition tries to eliminate or eliminates the separation distance in their entire, there are two bases, two for that petition. One is it's unconstitutional and illegal. We have asserted that. You have received an opinion where attorney Willis says that he is of the opinion that it is constitution. I'll do a little bit more on that later, but I have to say at this point, we disagree. But the second basis is one which he does cite in his letter. He says that you must consider whether it achieves the regulatory purposes defined in section eight dash two. So at the conclusion of his letter, he said, regardless of its unconstitutionality, you still have to determine whether or not the separation distance section of your existing regulation satisfies, achieves the regulatory purposes defined in eight dash two. The regulatory purposes in eight dash two, I'm just going to quote it, and it's more significant for what it doesn't say, because this is our assertion, that this separation distance doesn't come within the jurisdiction, doesn't meet the purposes for zoning regulations. And what section eight dash two says, such regulations shall be designed to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety, fire, panic, flood, and other dangers, to promote health and the general welfare, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, and to facilitate the adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. I think the closest that that may, the closest that that, that this comes to would seem to be for congestion in the, in the streets, the general purposes to avoid congestion in the, in the streets. And you have the statement from the traffic authority that is in support of this application and cites no negative aspects of having gasoline pumps without separation distance, but rather that there is a need for a gas station and they present it out before the problem at the food bank with cars coming out, because their distance above the street line is, is very short, so pre-existing, non-conforming use in that, in that regard. So it's our position that it is unconstitutional and thus illegal, but as pointed out by attorney Willis, you still need to determine whether it relates to those provisions. The evidence and the record is that it does not relate to any of the regulatory requirements in those, in those regulations. The last part about, just very quickly, I'm not going to conduct an argument with respect to attorney Willis's letter, particularly when he's, he's not here, but let me point out a couple of things in his, in his letter, is that, like he indicates that the two cases, Ratco Benson cases, in which courts found separation victims to be legal. One of those, the Ratco case, we cited in our memorandum. In our memorandum, he says, the difference is that that case was based upon the constitutional provision, you can't all pay property without due compensation. In other words, if a regulation is confiscateable, then it's unconstitutional. And Ratco case was based upon that confiscation issue that would say they had demonstrated it. We didn't cite the Burson case, but the Burson case, which he cites, is similar, that it's based upon the compensation clause, if it's not based upon the people protection clause that we cited. Finally, with respect to the matters and attorney Willis's letter, and pointing out these sites that Connecticut courts are not alone in upholding the constitutional Olivia gas station, he cites Florida cases. Actually, in our research, interestingly enough, there were three other states which we found had, had also upheld separation distances being constitutional. Four states found that they were unconstitutional. It's not a contest between how many states say yes or no. I only point that out for the provision that Connecticut law has not yet ruled on that particular aspect of the case, but as we said in our petition, very answered, it's not our desire to litigate, it's our desire to correct any deficiency, and that's why it's, we made the second application, which didn't eliminate the restriction entirely. I made any argument that the Big Y would have moved, because courts only look at cases, not any abstract, of where there is a specific injury. And that's why we showed the maps, just simply to show that we do have a proposal to put in a gas station within a thousand feet, actually five hundred and thirty-seven feet from the presenting. So that concludes our presentation, and it will be shorter when we get to the next one, and then I ask that these materials also be incorporated into that public hearing.
When we, when we get, when you get there. All right, any other communication? So that then, this evening, we received the Department of Police Service's letter from Chief Spira, Chief of Police, Michael Spira, Agent Spira, and Director of Emergency Management. And according to this letter, he reinforces that we have the local traffic authority included in his background and list of responsibilities. As it says in our section sixty-two, is the chief of police, the local traffic authority. And for the record, I listened to the recording of the previous meeting, and I did recognize that Chief Spira is also the local traffic authority, but my point was that it was not listed on the letter that we had received at that time. And curiously, while we recognize Chief Spira is also the local traffic authority, but again, is not under his signature on his letter of April second, but that's a separate matter. Then we have received from Halloran and Sage, and Mr. Royce, and you have also received this correspondence from Matt Willis, dated April third. All right, and have we anything else new to this application for this agenda item?
So at your previous meeting, I believe you, I was not at that meeting, but Joanne and the commission discussed, you have the referral response from the planning commission, Marcy Bullin and Deep, River Cog, and just for the record, all the referrals were sent out initially on February sixth, so it's been almost a month.
We did receive from Mr. Royce and some of the last meeting.
There's more than a month, two months, almost, too.
We also received, Mr. Royce, the two cases, one with an aerial photograph indicating five hundred and thirty-seven feet from existing gas pump to a point on the property at Max's Place, although that's not a specific property for this application, regarding this application for text change across the entire P four district. And we have also a master plan of Max's Place showing a potential layout for a site development change if the proposed texts were to be adopted. Anything else? So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application for a zoning regulation text change? Use the raise your hand feature? Yes, we have one. All right, our clerk is.
I, it's funny that it's not showing who.
The individual is.
I was sliding the screen over, that's why.
Put the screen, yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
There's the hand.
Kate, is that Kate DiCapua?
Hi, yes, hi, it's Kristen DiCapua.
Go ahead.
Okay, hi, hi, I'm, this is Kristen DiCapua, I live at two oh eight Schoolhouse Road. I'm, I'm here to speak in support of the proposed text change, which will allow a new gas station to be built on this side of town, a new modern gas station with E. V. charging stations and a parking lot configured to allow for proper flow of traffic, as well as parking for customers that want to go into the store will benefit us all. We have, it seems to be some big retail coming over to the side of town, and the existing station is not safe as it is right now to get in and out of there. It's one way in, one way out, the signage is not clear, it does not face the road. I think having a new modern facility on the opposite side of the street, a little bit closer to ninety-five, will allow for people to come in and out safely, get their gas, do their shopping, not have to come all the way through town to find another station to go to. I do, I do understand that there's many other stations in town, but this side of town is going to be getting a little bit more busy, and I think we need to be sure that we can support the people coming in and those of us that live over here. So thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you for listening to me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this text change application? None appearing?
Yeah, no, Mr. Royce, I should, I could just include just two, three points. You indicated that this is not a site-specific application, that the regulation changed for the P four district, which is absolutely true, but the reason for putting the maps in the file is because under your regulations, the applicant has to show in his application what interest he has in the regulation being adopted. So we have complied with the regulations in that respect. And secondly, we did want to, for the record, indicate that this was not an abstract matter for the applicant, rather, yeah, a particular interest and a proposal for a gas station within the, within the district. And finally, yes, it is not a site-specific one, that will be, have to go before the state traffic, O S T. A., Public Traffic Administration, local traffic authorities, and the zoning commission for a special exception before anything is built on that site. Thank you.
All right. One question with regard to the Max's Place master plan submitted, and referencing the aerial photograph, the distance of five hundred and thirty-seven plus or minus feet gets into the Max's Place Big Y property site, but I don't see any indication that one thousand feet from the existing pump would preclude Max's Place from having property on-site but beyond one thousand feet. Where would the one thousand feet line fall on, on the master plan site? Would that be near the, the entrance from Spencer Plain Road traffic light?
It would be approximately another four hundred and.
And so feet, please.
In the north league direction, because if you went in an easterly direction, it would still be within that same diameter, same radius of one thousand feet to the, to the feed bag. And as we indicated previously, the difficulty or non-peaceability with respect to the north end is because you do have the underground galleries or the wastewater treatment facility which services the Coles and the, and the grocery store and the other buildings on that, on that property. So that, plus it's affected by the parking in the buildings themselves, make that as a, not a feasible alternative, to the extent that's relevant, which I don't think it is.
All right, then, regard to the commission's digestion of materials, do we need any further input to deliberate on this matter?
I don't.
Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing of this application to eliminate separation distance for gasoline pumps. And this is the Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated, petition to change the zoning regulation to amend section fifty-three point one, standards for motor vehicle uses. Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? None appearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five in favor, no abstentions, none opposed. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated, petition to amend the Old Tiberic zoning regulations.
So are you going to deliberate on this or?
So I was just proceeding to the next agenda item. If you wish to deliberate on them one at a time, we can do that.
Oh, were you?
We have.
You were thinking both?
We have, we have sixty-five days for deliberation on both of these. And so it's not, let me put it to the commission then, without taking a vote, is there consensus to deliberate and or vote on item B this evening, the public hearing that we just closed? What do you think? I can't.
I can't tell.
You think we could proceed to deliberate on this?
Yeah.
It might be some advantage to wait to hear both so that you may want to compare the differences, that's.
Right, wow.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm willing to.
Okay, and we could deliberate on the item. Okay, then we, we could deliberate on the item. B, closed public hearing that we just closed, okay.
So just, uh, just to clarify, so you're closing the public hearing?
We did that.
And when are you continuing it to? Are you continuing it to another meeting or you're?
No, we're good, we're, we're, we just came to a consensus. To deliberate on the closed public hearing that we just voted to close. On the first petition to change the text. Item B on the agenda. Okay, are clear?
Yeah.
Okay, with regard to deliberations then. Everybody has, uh, received materials from the applicant, letters from the applicant, from Chief Spira. From our attorney, uh, from Halloran and Sage, Matt Willis. Comments from the public, uh, both within the room and online last, last time and, and this, this evening. And. We approach this. To be impartial regarding this application, not having any preconceptions. Uh, as to whether it, uh, should be adopted or, or, or not adopted. And we look at it in terms of, as Mr. Royston pointed out, it's section eight dash two of Connecticut general statutes, but. Uh, in more local sense, that's section one of the old Sabre zoning regulations. Which we abide by regardless, uh. And those are the seven items that Mr. Roy's been read to us this evening. In addition, we have section one point two. Where we are to consider a comprehensive plan of zoning for Old Sabre. And that's a consider, and to give due consideration for the recommendations of the plan of conservation and development of the town. With reasonable consideration as to the character of each district. And its peculiar suitability for particular uses. And with a view to conserving the values of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. And this is the. Exchange application for which the zo, the planning commission transmitted a referral saying.
This memorandum serves to report to the zoning commission that the planning commission recommends denial of the, of a matter is, it is not consistent with the. Plan of development. And that was March sixth.
Right. All right, anyone else have comments on this? All right, then, yes.
Just making sure, it's a little confusing with two files, but very, very similar. That's the denial. Was to eliminate separation distance.
Right. All right, to proceed according to the simplest straightforward path, then. Um, the procedure is. I will make a motion to approve the Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated. Petition to amend the Old Sabre zoning regulations. To amend section fifty-three point one standards for motor vehicle uses. To eliminate separation distance requirements for fuel pumps. The, uh.
And add, are you reading this?
I read, I read that. No, no, they're not.
You didn't finish.
And, no, they're.
Okay.
They're not adding that.
Okay.
So what I read is the application. All right, and in that regard, then, um. We refer to our existing regulations for comparison. And the section regarding B four. Section thirty-two point one and thirty-two point two. And the section fifty-three, which this. Application seeks to modify. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Jerry Lewis, second to motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to modify the. Text in section fifty-three point one standards for motor vehicle uses. To eliminate separation distance requirements for fuel pumps, signify by saying aye. One, two, two in favor. Any opposed to this application? One, two, three. Three opposed. The application is denied. No abstentions. Two in favor, three opposed. The two in favor were Jerry Lewis and Mark DeMonaco. And I'm sorry, and the three opposed were Mark Caldarella and Emery Thorson and Bob Freeman. Next on the agenda is item C, Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated. Petition to amend the Old Sabre zoning regulations to amend section fifty-three point one standards for motor vehicle uses. To reduce the separation distance requirement for fuel and add a requirement. I'm sorry, that's. That's out again. The requirement, is that still in? Yes. And to, uh, this, this application, item C. Does this include the mo, the electric vehicle charging station? Yes, it does. And so this public hearing is regarding reducing the separation distance requirement for fuel. And adding a requirement for vehicle battery charging stations. To the gateway business before shopping center district. And we have. Oops, I haven't had, that's the first. Okay, Ms. Royson, with regard to this application. Um, new materials since our March sixth meeting.
Uh, Chairman, um. Since the March sixth meeting, there has been submitted, uh, for the record. Uh, the memorandum of law, which applied to the first petition, but it was also. Uh, incorporated on the website under, uh, this, uh, petition. And so I think that's, that's fine, uh, to have that as a, uh, a part of, of this record. Um, certainly the maps which we put in to show the interest of the applicant. But also posted on the website as part of the, uh, record for this petition. And we, um, are happy to have them incorporated into the record. Uh, of this hearing, without objection. Um, the letter, uh, from attorney, uh. Uh, excuse me, the letter from Chief Spira has also been incorporated. Uh, into this, uh, record that likewise is fine by us to have that letter. Um, and, uh, uh, also, uh, Attorney Willis's letter has been incorporated, uh, here. Um, which is, uh, also fine by us because, um, he makes some general comments that is still what you are to, uh, consider. And, uh, I think it's appropriate for, uh, this application, which is a reduction in the, uh. Um, in the, uh, uh, distance. Um, the basis for, uh, for the reduction is to, um, accept. Uh, the legality of the regulation of, uh, uh, separation distances. Um, it is not clear in law Connecticut as to, uh, whether or not, um. It is appropriate and that would read a case to not default. We have no desire to be that litigant. Uh, this regulation to reduce it to five hundred feet. Will make any sort of, uh, claim by this particular applicant, uh, move. It satisfies, uh, its requirements. It does not prevent, uh, its use of. Uh, its property in a, in a reasonable way. The, um. Uh, this particular regulation has received. The, um, recommendation of the, uh, excuse me, the approval. Of the planning commission. However, they, um, recommended that you don't have the required where you charging station. Um. Um, we are not removing that. You think it's still a benefit to the community. Uh, to have those, uh, of a charging station as a condition. Uh, for having, um, additional, um, um, gas stations. So this application reduces the distance to five hundred feet. Um, it, uh, but adds. A requirement that for, for any new station that's going to come in, we have to, to recognize. Um, the new technology regarding, uh, vehicle charging, uh, stations. And for this reason, uh, there is a requirement that there be such stations in, in the regulation. Um, previously, the Economic Development Commission. Um, voted in favor of, uh, this particular regulation. Uh, the planning commission has voted in favor. Uh, there's been no objection there, though. By, uh, either any other, uh, agency. And I reiterate that. This, have this, uh, particular site, the applicant. Still will have to undergo, uh, regulatory scrutiny. Under your regulations. Under the State Traffic Commission or State Traffic Administration. Uh, regulations and, uh, uh, a local traffic authority. With the particulars of the access. Um, the plan has been, uh, limited in terms of entry and, uh. Uh, and access because of, of, uh, concerns expressed to the applicant previously. So, um, this is not the end step. There is a, uh, two, a further step involved. Um, you'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that may still exist concerning the regulation. Character of the regulation or its purpose.
With regard to new materials submitted. This evening, we, do we have, um, any of the same that we have seen previously this evening?
I believe everything is part of the, uh, of the record. Um, you have, uh, the, the letters of Chief Spira and Matt Willis. You have the, uh, the maps.
The letter from Matt Willis was in response to your memorandum of law dated March twenty-third. Is that part of this application as well?
It made part of this record, yes.
Okay, and we have the aerial photograph and the master. The master plan for Max's.
Acceptance, yes.
And, uh, again, with regard to Chief Spira's letter. As I recall, reviewing the recording of the March sixth meeting, it was at. Nineteen minutes and forty-five seconds that I recognized the local traffic authority. And, and as, as Chief Spira, and, um, yes, we accept this letter. And, and it's his interpretation of, of the events of that meeting. And we take, um, note and provide, the whole zoning commission gives due consideration to input from. The local traffic authority. And Chief Spira as chief of police and director of emergency services. And we also have input from DEEP and from the planning commission, as noted by Mr. Royson. Anyone else?
We gateway. The gateway to the, uh, regional planning. Is that the one from Marcy? Ellen? So it appears that. The February ninth letter. Just double checking, it's only in the first file. From Torrance Downs at River Cog. But I believe it's in both records. All right, upside. And I have a question about the text. Let's just clarify this. So I just have a question about the text. So Attorney Royston. The text on February third. Was submitted. And then. At the March sixth. Zoning meeting. There was a markup that we have in the record with what the planning commission wanted to say. And that removes the EV chargers, that's correct? I just want to make sure we have all the same.
That, that letter, um. Was, I submitted that because, um.
So this is.
Because I told the planning commission that, that it was, and I emphasize that, and I emphasize again. That, uh, this is not what we are proposing. We are not supporting a elimination of that.
I just want to. So the EV text is staying in here. I'm sorry to interrupt, just, I'm trying to track through this and there's. I've got one other question, so on the line from the third, it said except. That for a motor vehicle new and station in a shopping center in the business B four district. And then the one we talked about March sixth, we crossed out that part with in the shopping district. So is it still in the shopping district? So it's the February third before.
In the B four.
It's the B four.
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, with, with it, um.
Uh, so just, could I, I have a question about this too, because I just want to be clear. It also says that. It leaves in the one thousand foot radius of any pumper or fueling device, is that? That's not a February third text change? And then it goes on to say, except in the B four district in the shopping center. So it has both, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I think we need a clearer. Picture of exactly what the text. We've been around a bunch of things.
And that's why I asked, but there's not a clean.
Yes.
Version of it.
Right.
Yes, I understood that the March sixth submission with the redactions in black.
Yeah.
Was in response to a planning commission and it was to compare. Uh, the planning commission referral to. And it was to compare, uh, the planning commission referral to compare what would result from their referral that the applicant stated at the March 6th meeting was not what they were applying for. So the one with the black redactions is what would result from the planning commission's recommendation, but that is not the text change application.
That's correct. That's what I.
So we're going back to the February.
Back to the February 3rd submission.
Yeah.
Where the 1,000 feet of separation stays in place, except that for a motor vehicle fueling station in a shopping center in the gateway business B4 district, the radius would be, will be 500 feet. Provided there will be vehicle battery charging stations on that lot, on the shopping center lot of not less, with not less than 50% of the number of gasoline pumps. Right.
Right.
To be clear, that's.
Yes.
I will see you on the agenda.
Yes, that's what we have.
Leave the, um.
Yeah.
Well, if it didn't include the 1,000 feet.
Okay.
So we will accept that. It will be 500 feet on the B4 in a shopping center in the B4 district. And I, um, um, because there's a question, okay, the B4 shopping center, that's more of a limitation as to where it can, uh, it can go. Uh, if it's, if part of the applicant is concerned, it is not essential. And if there was any feeling part of the commission, it ought to be uh, wider than the shopping center, uh, completely, but that is fine, right? I think it ought to be, uh, go exactly the way it is. I think that makes the most, uh, the most.
Right. Come on. This text change application would not affect properties in, uh, regarding motor vehicle uses, uh, unless it's in a B4 district and it's in a, in a shopping center.
Correct. That is correct.
And the definition of a shopping center from section nine of our regulations for purposes of establishing off-street parking requirements, a shopping center is a group of no less than four business establishments that may include retail stores, personal services, theaters, or restaurants with a public vehicle parking area paired in common. Now that specifically mentions a definition of a shopping center for the purposes of establishing off-street parking requirements. Are there other addition, additional definitions of the term shopping center? We have in, in our parking section referencing the term shopping center. There. 62.4.6, non-residential uses. And we go to shopping center is, uh, being the dog six, shopping center. Parking for shopping centers will be provided in ratio of one parking space for each 175 square feet of grossable area in the shopping center with a minimum of 125 spaces. The requirement is instead of other individual parking ratio requirements for individual uses. For the purposes of establishing off-street parking requirements, a shopping center lot must contain no less than two acres of land and have not less than 20,000 square feet of gross floor area. So again, that's referencing the purposes of off-street parking requirements. So there is no perfect definition of shopping center except through parking requirements in our regulations. In our regard, using what we have in our regulations, the shopping center would be no less than four business establishments subject to the, uh, layout and subdivision and buildings and uses on a particular piece of property by the property owner. And that that shopping center would provide parking in section 62. Um, and then, and that shopping center would have to have a lot of no less than two acres and have not less than 20,000 square feet of gross floor area. So that the number of businesses meeting the definition number of four and the land area of not less than two acres and 20,000 square feet of gross floor area narrows what can be considered a shopping center. If your lot's too small, you can't be a shopping center, even if you have more than four businesses. If your businesses don't have 20,000 square feet of gross floor area, you can't be a shopping center to use the parking calculations. So what is a shopping center? In this particular case, the applicant directs our attention to Max's place. However, in regard to the text change application, this would modify the location of gas stations in a B4 district wherever it's on a, it's, it's in a shopping center. And so according to my local knowledge, the only lot that would meet that currently would be Max's place. Near Max's place is another lot in the B4 district, which could meet the requirements of 20,000 square feet grossable area, two acres and four businesses. But at present, it has only three businesses. But it could be a fourth at the whim of the owner and/or the users in the building. So that may or may not be a shopping center. Furthermore, other B4 properties that may, um, qualify in terms of grossable area of the businesses and four of them on a lot not less than two acres. It's not immediately apparent to me without going on a case-by-case basis, lot to lot, what would qualify to be the subject of this regulation. So without a, a better, clearer definition of shopping center, except calculated through the parking regulations, this proposal to allow for there to be, uh, fuel-filling devices or device at, um, motor vehicle fueling station to be located 500 feet, outside of 500 feet. Because it happens to meet the parking and the grossable area and acreage and four businesses. Makes for confusing regulations. If we had a clear definition of a shopping center as to what it is and what it is not, without relying on the parking calculations, perhaps that would make this proposed text change clearer in where it might result in terms of actual, uh, existence on a B4 property in a shopping center in other areas of town. And so in the business B4 district in section 34.1 and 34.2, we can have can have shopping centers. We can have shopping centers in the B4 district. Interestingly enough, in the B4 gateway business B4 district, section 34 regulations under permitted uses, shopping center is not a permitted, nor is it a special exception use per se. A shopping center simply results from a combination of parking requirements as having a minimum of four businesses, 20,000 gross, square feet grossable area and a minimum of two acres all at the same time. So this regulation does not clarify, uh, for me, where a vehicle fueling device or, uh, vehicle fueling station would be in the B4 district. Because this application, a text for the text change would adopt those criteria for allowing new fueling stations.
Should say after the word shopping center should say, incorrect, since it's defined by.
Well, we don't have that.
I know we don't have that. Is that, is that kind of, is that.
Yeah, what, yeah, what I'm saying is we don't have a clear definition of a shopping center in order for it to be pointed to as a result of the text change application before us tonight. Yes, Mr. Royce.
Um, in response to that observation, uh, I think, uh, Chris Costa can, uh, confirm that, uh, probably about a year and a half ago, uh, you did, uh, uh, come up with a, uh, basically a chart of, uh, shopping centers under the extant definitions, that is four buildings and, uh, two acre minimum. And, uh, uh, that is then consistently what the language of the regulations has been interpreted to mean. Shopping center, the parameters of a shopping center is a, where you have, um, these four buildings devoted to the retailer use and a lot be a minimum of two acres.
Not necessarily four buildings, four uses.
Four uses.
And then all of those that exist in the regulations to date regarding shopping center or for the purposes of parking calculation, this would add a new purpose associated with the term shopping center in determining whether or not there could be vehicle fueling stations, which is different from parking calculation.
I, I would, I'd suggest that first of all, for the record, I think, can you confirm that that has been, uh, as the definition that you have used for regulatory purposes? Four uses and minimum two acres.
I've used the four uses for shopping center, but not the minimum acreage. And I'll be honest, if we kind of always said four was a shopping center, I have, I didn't realize it before, just to, I don't refer to the actual definition every time, it just sort of stuck in my head. So I think the definition is, our chairman said we need to.
That the applicant
Clarify.
Has no objection to the insertion of the language, um, after the word shopping center, um, uh, being, uh, for retail uses on a lot of not less than two acres.
Alright, so we, the applicant is specifying that the existing regulations regarding shopping center and parking calculations would apply through the use of the term shopping center in the post-text before us.
Right, and the applicant also has no objection to the deletion of the word shopping center and just leave it in the B4 district. That may be a judgment call on the part of the commission, but we have, we have no objection to either one of those certifications or amendments to the river.
So for the intent of item B and the proposed text for 53.1, then a no motor vehicle fueling station will be located or within radius of 1,000 feet of any pump or other fuel-filling devices or device on the other lot, on any other lot, except that for a motor vehicle fueling station in a shopping center in the gateway business B4 district, the radius will be 500 feet, provided there will be vehicle battery charging stations on the shopping center lot of not less than 50%. So this makes the the possibility of existence of a motor vehicle fueling station in the B4 district contingent on it being in the B4 district and being in a shopping center and providing electric vehicle charging stations. And so this proposed regulation in effect creates something with this contingent on three other items having already, being satisfied. The EV charging stations would come with it, right? I don't know that there's any other regulation that makes existence of a particular use dependent on more than one other condition or of, of the property of the district or some, or, or other contingency. Again, it has to do with parking, it has to do with accessory uses. And I don't recall that there is other uses that require more than one other contingency. This requires three. So this to me is, uh, not as neat and, 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 and clean cut. Uh, regulation as, as our existing regulation, that's how I see it. Just my opinion.
What if we took the, uh, shopping center part out? That's what I thought we were gonna do.
If it said shopping center.
No, just take that.
Did not say shopping center.
If it did not say shopping center at all. Yeah.
The applicant said they have no objection to, uh, that deletion.
Right.
Both, both uses of shopping center? There's two, right?
Correct.
So for retail uses on a lot less than two acres? More than.
No.
More than. Oh, more than.
Remove shopping center, so you don't have to count uses.
Oh, 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 okay.
Area or acreage.
Alright.
And so this then would allow for there to be motor vehicle fueling devices on other lots in the B4 district, which are separated by 500 feet from existing fueling station. Fueling devices. Without regard to lot size or other uses on the lot. Typically, again, this, reducing the words to make it have in this particular case, reducing the words, eliminating the term shopping center from its two instances here, does not make the regulation more restrictive. It makes the regulation looser in terms of it allowing more across the entire B4 district here in Max's place case and in other B4 districts as well. And my experience has been that a change in a proposed text regulation should not make the proposed text regulation more expansive in what it allows, but only make it more restrictive in what it allows in order for there to have been adequate public opportunity to respond to the change in regulations. What I mean, if you propose a regulation to achieve X and the public gets a chance to respond on that, and then you modify the proposed text to achieve X plus a lot more than X would otherwise have permitted, that's more expansive than the original. And the public needs to have an opportunity to respond to the more expansive proposed text. And I don't, I think removing shopping center allows for there to be a lot more gas stations, 500 feet apart. 500 feet apart, across the B-4 district. Alright, so, any other comments or questions? Anyone online wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application before us this evening? Is that a hand up?
No.
Oh, leftover?
It's just a...
Yeah, it's just a mute button. Anyone in the room wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application, now it's a hearing. None appearing.
I have a question. So how are we gonna word this? Is this, how is this gonna be, are we changing this? Is the applicant changing it?
The applicant had no, no objection to, but does that mean that the applicant wishes to modify its submission?
I'd like to know what the hell it is.
Right.
Because...
Yeah.
Okay.
The applicant, the applicant void, and the the concern about notice, I think, well, it's pretty clear as long as you give the public the general knowledge of what is being acted upon, the notices are sufficient. If that remains a concern, then I would suggest that you simply accept a, the amendment to delete that section on behalf of the applicant and continue the matter to a a meeting where you have, you republish the notice, continue your public hearing, just republish it on the amended, amended application. Thanks. I, I... I don't want to go through all that, but if that is, if the consensus is, that would be sufficient to satisfy the commission, then I think just continue the matter until it can be re-noticed, since the public hearing has to be the 15 day requirement, I think it would be prudent to, if you're gonna do that, to continue it to your May 1 meeting.
Right, so there's the applicant, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so the first thing is that we would need the applicant to grant an extension, because we need to close the public hearing.
Yes.
The second thing that I'm flipping around for is if we change... We're changing the text now. Okay, what is the change? So now this is on a lot of more than two acres?
Alright, so you're proposing to modify the proposed text change to include the effective result of the term "shopping center" based on its appearance in Section 9 and in Section 62? Yeah. So the three criteria that establish a shopping center as being, a minimum of four commercial uses, gross floor area combined of at least 20,000 square feet and a minimum of two acres. Those three terms would replace the term "shopping center".
So you're removing "shopping center", correct?
Yes.
And adding on more than two acres?
No.
So you're removing "shopping center", and that's...
We're removing "shopping center".
To remove "shopping center" opens up the possibility of motor vehicle fueling stations at many more B-4 locations. If you wish to substitute the terminology that, that in our regulations sets up a shopping center with regard to parking via shopping center definition in Section 9 and parking regulations in Section 62, you would have to specify in the text for this text change application, those items that create a shopping center according to existing rules. That there be more than four uses, that there be a minimum of 20,000 gross feet, square feet, gross floor area on the site, probably among those four or more uses, and that the site be a minimum of two acres. That would capture the essence of what is a shopping center.
Chairman.
And that, yes, Mr. Roy.
I am prepared to take this amendment and to amend it, and also to request and consent to an extension of the public hearing until your May 1 meeting. And I'm prepared to also to not only strike "shopping center", but to add in on a lot of two acres or more, not less than two acres. But I don't want to do that if I amend it and then we go forward and there's a, a problem on the, by the commission to say, "Well, I don't want the two acres, or I don't want the, it's a shopping center." I would request that a if there is a consensus that this would be sufficient for the passage of the regulation, the two things. Eliminate "shopping center", but have a minimum area of a lot of two acres. And I'll go ahead, if there's something to say, "No, forget about the two acres, just use the shopping center", I'm fine on doing that. You want both, I'm fine on doing that. But before doing that, I don't want to get on the dilemma going through all this republishing and the day after we've been here and it's a lot.
Yeah, so I guess I'm worried about another dilemma. Is that by changing motor vehicle fueling, are we impacting automotive uses?
We're making no changes
We're not changing that.
into definitions, and specifically in the language, you use the language of fuel filling devices.
I'm just going through, so...
The, the change of, if you look at the underlying, the change to language, "other fuel filling devices".
I just want to make sure we're clear so we don't inadvertently create another problem to resolve one, if that makes...
Yeah. I hope you don't, that's...
But, but no, but that's why, that's why I'm just, that's why I'm scrambling here, flipping pages, saying, okay, you change it in one place, how does that... What will it do to one other?
That is why, if you want, if you want to take a look at the new regulation, change it to automatic automotive uses, that's the reason why this amendment underlining "other fuel filling devices" so it'd be consistent with your new automotive uses section.
Chairman, the, the current amendment on, as proposed as C is being substantially modified, potentially. And in doing so, wouldn't that, shouldn't this petition to amend be withdrawn and a new one submitted? Well, that would be, that's up to the applicant.
I would request, just to tell you, that that is why I say republish it, so that...
Well, that's the point, so that the public has insight and they have an opportunity to to speak if they so choose.
That is correct, rather than that gives them the opportunity, it's republished without going through the entire...
So if it, if it can be amended, the way it is, to what the applicant is asking for, to, more reason why it needs to be continued, so that the public has an opportunity to speak either way, or, or at all.
Yes.
Because it, it, it changes, it changes it in my mind substantially.
I agree. That's why I said...
I'm trying to clarify.
You agree.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I said I agree to the, will consent to an essential time for completion of the public hearing in order that it can be re-advertized as the, as an amended application.
We're on the same page, just got there differently.
Yeah, right, we are, you just want to make sure we're on the same page about, is it "shopping center" just being deleted?
Well, you're, you're, you're the applicant, you have to decide what, what it is that you want.
I want to decide that based upon what I believe to be, the
Chris?
The consensus of the commission.
So, the change that you might propose should include the three contingencies which presently establish a shopping center, and then the two additional contingencies that would allow for the location of a motor vehicle fueling station in a B-4 district. So all five contingencies would have to be specified. Shopping center, in your proposal, "shopping center" is one, B-4 district is two, and, and electric vehicle charging stations is three. Shopping center in and of itself contains three contingencies, so there's three there plus the other two, there's five contingencies regarding the location of a motor vehicle fueling station. Separation, shopping center has three. The B-4 district and the separation distance of 500 feet is, is a different contingency, and then the electric vehicle charging station is the other. So I think there's five contingencies on allowing the location of a motor vehicle fueling station at not less than 500 feet from an existing. So in terms of what you had proposed, there were contingencies listed there, but shopping center was a fungible thing with regard especially to the number of uses on a lot, determined by today there's four, next week there's three, six months from now there's four. Was it a shopping center? The only one that matters to the applicant for a new motor vehicle fueling station would be that it be a shopping center at some point in time, and then quick, when there's four and it's a shopping center, get a motor vehicle fueling station opposed, and then it goes back to three uses, and now it's a non-conforming use. But it was approved as a conforming use, so that kind of fungibility in the regulations does not make for good regulations.
I agree on your concept of
Okay, now...
The fungibility is here, I thought, can I, can I put it in from the abstract? And again, repeat what I am willing to do, and if I could get some sort of an indication that that is sufficient. What I propose to do is to eliminate the word "shopping center", "shopping center" in the, in the petition language, and just eliminate the the word "shopping center", and not add, and not add 200, to the two acre minimum lot. Now I think you're doing, eliminating "shopping center", so all the area contingency, number of uses, contingency in other parts of the regulations would not apply. And and request a continuation of the public hearing to consider that amendment being republished with notice.
I, I'm trying to take it all in because we're making make sense here, but if you make us change somewhere else, I understand you're saying to eliminate "shopping center", and then you're gonna put two acres.
And I do this...
No, he wants to... He wanted to take that out, I thought. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's just another...
So then, the minimum lot size for a shopping center would then be reduced to that of the B-4? No, it's got nothing to do with shopping centers at all. I'm sorry, the minimum of the gas station would go to, fueling station would go to 20,000 square feet in the B-4? Yeah. So from correct, from two acres to 20,000 square feet?
That's, that's correct, that is in the
Yeah, we said that.
Extant one.
Yes.
Financial change. If you want to continue it, I think that's great, but I'd like to see in black and white is, what is what is the petition to amend, because we've bobbled around here so much.
We continue it and have it re-noticed, then it will, it'll be in writing. It'll be in writing. So you will, you will see it, and you'll have until May 1 to ponder it.
So does it change the intent of the people who reviewed it? So would the planning commission look at this differently now that it's on a 20,000 square foot lot?
Sure would.
If we're re-advertising it to the public? And, and I'm not trying to delay this, I'm just trying to be practical about it. So you would just withdraw and resubmit? No, he's asking you to resubmit. Oh, no, I'm not resubmitting the application, I'm not the...
Then I mean the whole doing a new regulation, new application, paying new application fees, then have letters going, and the first thing is just what happened to the previous one? I think that if you re-notice it, then you can send out, continue the public hearing, you can send it to the planning commission, so it has been revised, and does this change you are finding a consistency with the plan of conservation and development? Send it to Gateway, send it to DEEP, send it to whoever else you think you need to do.
And then, how does that work with regard to the timeline under which we're operating regarding public hearing?
So tonight we're supposed to close the public hearing, the applicant would have to grant an extension.
So we would also...
Yeah, so, an extension of the timeline, then the land use department would have to go through and re-advertise it based on what's submitted, and then send referrals for amended. Which is essentially what we do for a new application. But now we're at the end of the clock.
That should provide on a request.
I think it's cleaner for a new application, but that's my opinion, whatever.
The 356535, so the applicant then would group, with the commission would have to ask the applicant for a timeline extension in order to allow for these changes to occur during our allocated time period for this public hearing.
Under the statute, I need to contest, I need to request and consent to it. And I do.
And the extent would be to a particular date in the future?
To the conclusion of the, your meeting of May 1, 2023.
It's in the date?
May 1st.
My, my thought process is...
My my thought process is that we we. Have seen so many versions. We've talked through a number of different. I'll say opportunities this evening. That it's a little messy. Okay? And I think in clarity as a commissioner, and I won't speak for myself, and I would think the same would hold true for the public. Is that a new application should be submitted if we can find a way to work through that. So that it's less painful if at all possible. And I think that's what we should do. Rather than the path that we're just discussing.
Okay, I think that what Chris said. Is that if I give you a request and extension to a public hearing uh to the conclusion, May first, 2023. Um, uh, meeting. And that this which I'll put on here is the uh amendment. A request that you re-notice it. I think you said that to send. I'll send it out to the whoever.
And then we have to wait for them to respond. And I mean, I'm just saying, I think it's cleaner to start over. That's that's my opinion. Well, I understand we can do it the other way. I just think it's. We've set referrals out. We're now going through. Today is April 3rd. We typically give for a text amendment 35 days. I understand it's similar, but I I don't think it's necessarily similar because we're going from two acres to 20,000 square feet. We're removing shopping center, which now we have a different view on shopping center because of the issue with parking. Being referenced to the parking section. I I just think it's. That's my opinion. It's up to the commission. It's their decision.
Then the help for referrals. Allow us for them to respond within 35 days.
And granted, they've seen a text amendment, but this is a. Different text amendment in some ways.
May first is not 35 days away. And so that a referral could go out and they would wish to reply, but if they didn't get their reply back to us by May first. We would have to ask for another extension in order to receive the referrals within their 35 day allotment.
And. All due respect, Mr. Chairman, that is the scenario. If we uh. Submit the amendment and request the extension gets re-noticed. When the referrals do not go under the previous statutory 35 days uh for deep. If we withdraw. Then the public hearing would have to be scheduled for May 15th. Not May 1st, because you are correct. We would not have the necessary time to make the referrals.
And I agree with the 35 days for the initial referral. I'm just concerned. It's different.
As as. I do not. Uh, want to be at odds with the zoning enforcement in a certain way. He considers his um. Insist on what your duties. Then. Uh.
I'm not saying we're at odds. I'm just saying if he gets it.
I don't want.
A cleaner process the other way because I'm trying to be transparent with everybody who's been involved.
You're recommending I withdraw. Okay. Um, so I don't want to be at odds with you and contest that recommendation. So um. I am going to withdraw. The application. And if somebody says. That you're wasting your time because that ain't going to get approved. Anyway, please let me know now, okay? Because I I don't want to go.
It depends on the application.
Yep. Okay, depends on the application. The application is going to be um just that uh. Uh, we eliminate these words shopping center in the draft regulation now.
And if and if in the language of a proposed text amendment. That reached. The the commission's responsibility to mesh it with the comprehensive plan in zoning. And with regard to the impact on what uses might then. Result from an adoption of a text change across the B four district. That decision comes later. That's not for us to indicate during the public hearing on this application, whether or not that's.
I do. I understand.
Up or down.
I understand. You have to you have to uh consider the application on its nerves and what it says at the time it comes before you uh that way. So um.
Need some time.
I want to consult with my plan.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Five minute recess. I move for a five minute recess back in second. Second by Mark Calderella. All in favor of five minute recess, signify by saying aye. They have a five minute recess. They ever said eight thirty six.
Nine is.
Exactly twenty, right? Eight forty one.
Watch one game yesterday?
Did they just still motion?
Yeah. Tough game, yeah.
You didn't just do a motion. Or did you?
He did.
He did. He didn't motion per five minute reset. Mark seconded it. He didn't ask us if we all agreed. Yeah.
So we're still recording during the recess not to interfere with them.
How do you think it's going to play out? The the game.
Again, James said.
No, I know. Twelve points. Well, it's not much. I think it's going to be a it's going to be a bad.
I I'd like to see 20, but that's not going to happen.
That's what it should. I agree with. The way they played so far, if they can get a new play, they should win.
They have they have not had less than 12 points as differential.
Yeah, the the game the other night was below 12 or.
First, fourteen, thirteen.
Thirteen, I think it was. Back in January, you would never think that they'd be where they're at. No, no.
It's just. Yeah. You think they impacted it yesterday by? In fact, the girls came.
Yeah, a little a little bit. It's. Particularly that technical that they flagged on the. I have.
You don't do that.
Coach was pushing the referee around on the floor.
There's a lot of insinuation in the game together.
Well, you know, some motions.
Yeah, but you don't do those things.
No, I know, but I I could never imagine playing at that level.
Yeah.
And you never know what's. Which which would you refer to? The the one with. Wow, with the. A lot different than the NBA. They got their kids. Yeah. Twenty twenty one years old, kids. Chairman. We have to call it. We have to call it back. Okay, we have we have to go to.
Two more minutes.
Eight forty one.
All right, so motion to reconvene.
Jerry Lewis makes a motion to reconvene at. Three fifty nine.
At eight fifty nine. Eight thirty nine.
Eight thirty nine, sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Mark Calderella.
All in favor.
All in favor of reconvening at eight eight fifty.
Thirty nine.
Thirty nine.
Aye.
Motion carried five zero zero. Yeah, Mr. Royce.
Uh, as chairman, members of the commission. Um. I am going to give you a withdrawal of the uh second petition. And we will reapply.
All right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is new business, the 2023 outdoor seating renewal.
So as you're aware, the last. Several years now, you have sent out our outdoor seating renewals. And have asked that the applicants only reply if they're making a change. So there have been no responses and no requests for change. Actually, this is what happened last year as well.
Yeah.
I could read through the list. If of everyone, it's the same as. Last year.
We're going to make this work.
Good night.
Is there any COVID impact remaining on that?
So this is our pre-COVID outdoor seating. These are all modifications to special permits. And the COVID outdoor seating, sorry, I'm shuffling too much here today. The COVID areas in this part. The COVID outdoor seating. We don't know at this point if the governor's going to renew it. Usually we find out at the last minute. So. Several months ago, this commission decided we just not enforce COVID outdoor seating this year if it expires for the governor order and asks everyone. Once we know what's going to happen. Um, to apply for permanent seating if they intend to keep it.
You have asked them that already? That's true.
No, I don't know what the governor's order was. So usually we sign down at the last minute. So. Um, we haven't heard once we find out if there's no change. Then we'll leave it as it is. If there is a change, then we'll give everyone. Till the end of the year to. Apply for next year.
So that leaves our. Businesses with outdoor seating. Happy for the time being.
That is cool. Well, right now, the there. So they're approved for. Their regular outdoor seating, part of the special section. If the COVID orders are not extended, they can keep their seating till the end of the year. And that gives them time for application unless we don't have everybody running in with. Quick, kind of sloppy applications without the information you need and them to make an informed decision.
Right.
So do you want me to read through them or?
They're the same.
No. We can just have Joanne.
If there's no changes, if there's no. If there's no changes in regard to new outdoor seating. We don't need to read through all the ones that are repeats or perhaps in the case of a. Business that's not operating any longer. We don't need to worry about that renewal anyway.
Yeah, okay, we're fine. So you just need to make the motion approve. Okay, motion to approve the outdoor saving.
There are seconders. Second. Second is by Mark.
Twenty twenty three.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, non-assumptions, none. In this in the statute that takes effect on May first, I do note that uh. The uh, where is that? Can even go on sidewalks as long as they still have four feet of ADA compliant space. They can use uh street parking. And. Uh, they own a lot next door or have permission to use a not lot next door as long as the use is is allowed in the lot. In the zone in the lot next door, it can go over the property line. And where to go?
So this is the new statute.
Oh, very last. Very last line. Provide a copy of such authorization to the zoning commission and four. Until nine PM or a time established by the zoning commission or the municipality. So. If our statement of use special exception permit specifies that they can go beyond nine PM. They can still do that. But if it doesn't. Then nine PM is the latest they can go. And I think is music in is music in this somewhere?
I I don't remember off the top.
Uh, that's what I was looking for. Um. Anyway, in the earlier iterations of the. Outdoor seating for COVID related uh food and beverage establishments included. Uh, music would be allowed until nine PM as long as it was acoustic and non-amplified. And I don't see that in this one, but we will get back to that. To that. Forma come up again. All right. If I get a chance to look at the updated version of the. Um. Drive through window proposed exchange.
Idea. No, I didn't.
So the highlighted parts are the parts that are still up for discussion. There's a. Not a lot left, so we can look to get to those soon.
But these are all, they're still ideas. I crossed out what I thought you wanted crossed out. I highlighted things that I wasn't sure. Or the commission wasn't sure what they wanted. And then. Um, I did check with our attorney. Um, who said it's fine to specify, you know, certain roads and that in the district without breaking the uniform. It's out of one lot. Um. So I added the text that was discussed that would allow for. Drive-throughs of Boston Post Road, East Boston Post Road. And then I didn't know there was some discussion on Spencer Plain. Because we had that in our text.
Yeah, Matt Willis was okay with that distinction.
Right, so I didn't know where you were with Spencer Plain. Right now it currently has a portion of Spencer Plain, so that was something I just. Kind of added back in that probably should be in yellow.
You know, I don't think we ever. I think we backed off.
So no Spencer Plain.
Originally we said north of ninety five, then we said no. I remember that, yeah.
Um, the change to 90,000 square feet, which gets closer to two acres. We eliminated the idea of having drive-throughs as a primary use. We eliminated drive-throughs in the B two. This is. Um. We eliminated, there was some discussion at one point about having. Um. More than two on a lot. The commission went to one on a lot, so I removed all the text on two. And. We eliminated the drive-throughs. We do the food not. I think that's why. I'm just kind of summarizing quick. Um. And Joanne's right, in the B two. That was just for. Um, food. I think we left it. It was food and pharmacy. But banks could remain. There was discussion if a separation distance of a thousand feet. Was legal. We now know or think we know that it is legal. Um, so. A thousand feet seem to be a number in the regulations. It's something for you. To consider and determine. Um. For stacking. I removed all the text um where we designated the stacking by. I removed all the text where we designated the stacking, financial institution would have nine with two after the window, ATM or ITM pharmacies would have ten with two after the pickup or presentment window. For indoor restaurants, it would be fourteen with two after the window, that eliminated the need for just spaces between menu boards, payment windows and so forth. What else? I added and we can remove that food and beverage establishments have prepared food and beverages ready for consumption. So that you don't have a drive-through grocery, but that's which we can add that too. So I'm not, I think the, the next step would be to go through and continue. So I didn't highlight every single thing, I just highlighted the things that we changed and you have to decide. So your next meeting, we do have a preliminary discussion for a potential with Penny Lane, they have some, they've had some outdoor music. And their outdoor seating area, and they want to discuss it. We get a complaint from one of the neighbors, they would like to keep it permanently, so I said that was not part of their original application, so other than that, your agenda for the next meeting is pretty wide open and we can just kind of do what we did and close it. If you'd like to do that, or we can continue on and start.
Yeah, let's continue with the.
Continue to the next meeting, I'll close the agenda other than that one discussion and then we'll push anything else on May first. And then if you can think of anything else, anything we want to add, if you want to go back to reinvent something new.
No, we need to move this. We started as fast as we can.
We continue in May first.
On the April meeting, I apologize.
So the April seventeenth meeting.
Then that'll be the only agenda, I'm with the preliminary discussion. And then May first. Are we done?
Anything else?
Good.
We can skip staff report, I know everybody wants to hold and watch the game.
I know.
I can make, I'll have a longer staff report next time.
Okay, good.
Keep you up late.
Terry Lewis makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Mark Calderella seconds, Terry Lewis is motion to adjourn. Okay. None. Seconds, none, motion carried.